Alright, let's take a look at some more work for our final project. Now, a few days ago, I went onto tanks.com or tankmart.com and found some data that I scraped into some tables, rolled that all together into a data frame that I could do some stuff with. But can I do something more interesting than simply pull some stuff into a table and make some new columns? And I think the answer is yes. I had some ideas on how to make this project a little bit more interesting, but I don't remember what they are off the top of my head. I don't think I wrote it down in my phone. But I do have an idea on a relatively simple thing I can do to make this a little bit more useful, which is I'm going to put into a shiny app. So, let's go ahead and make a new file for a shiny web app. Yeah, I was thinking something about a plumber API. I don't know, maybe I got notes written at home and maybe this project ends up changing dramatically. But for now, I'm just gonna go ahead and make the shiny web app. So, I will put this in a single file called app.r. Our application name will at least temporarily be tanks. We will create, that's in the right folder, good to go. Let's check Git. So, now we've got in here a folder called tanks that contains app.r. What did I do? Oh, I did... Oh no, this is shiny. I do... Remember now. I had some notes way down at the bottom here. Generate visualizations, make shiny app. Still not ringing any bells, but whatever. We'll keep playing with water tanks and see what we see. So, I've got this. Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm going to make sure that this gets saved as a CSV. So, write CSV. Tank prices dot CSV. Cool. So, we're gonna save this. Let's go ahead and stage that. Save CSV output. Commit. Close. Let's add this folder, including apps. Add shiny app. Commit. Close. Push. Alright, so all this stuff is off on GitHub right now. Close, close, we are good to go here. So, let's go ahead and just source this, clear everything out, pull it down. It's gonna take a little bit to download everything, to ingest everything politely. Now, in here, let's go ahead and start getting a handle on what I want to do. Let's see, I've got some warnings. But looks like tanks still works. And I remember there were some things where I wanted to loop through multiple pages, but again, I'm just gonna leave it as it is. Don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. So, let's just see what the default shiny app does. So, this is just demo code. So, right now, we've got the old faithful geyser data and we can change the number of bins that we have on our histogram. And it does this all nicely, updates everything. Cool. So, we could put in a bar chart. I think I want a scatter plot to compare the volume of different tanks, maybe with their floor space. And maybe have a variation for the color. Or sorry, not for the color, for the change in the color on the graph. Maybe to represent price or something like that, or price per gallon. Cool, so there's some visualizations that I might do. Let's go ahead and get this stuff in. So, it's the tanks that I really want, tankprices.csv. So, let's go ahead line by line. So, our title panel is going to be water tank prices. We'll leave it as a histogram for right now. So, our output is a distribution plot. We're going to render a plot. So, notice here, we've got a bunch of nested things. So, we've got this server function. So, everything in here is part of this function. Within this function, we create this thing called output dist plot, which is the result of calling render plot, which has this block of code inside. So, effectively... Alright, this is sort of the key thing, render plot. But we're going to put it into something called output, which corresponds with this. And we're going to add on a thing called dist plot, so that when we go to here and we want to create this fluid page that we are messing with. And go ahead and... Run this. It's gonna change the title at this point. So, here is our fluid page that we've got here. And this plot output... Oh, I see. This plot output is from this output generated in the server. So, we've got two functions, server and UI. So, the server is kind of setting things up and then UI is making it work. So, we've got sidebar layout, we've got a sidebar panel. In that panel, we've got this thing for the number of bins. And then we've got our main panel where we show our distribution plot. So, for here, we're calling in faithful. When we load in our data, is it just from here? I guess it is. Alright, so this isn't really what we want. What do we want? We want, I'm gonna call it df will be read csv tank, actually up one folder and then tankprices.csv. So, this file is in this tanks folder down here. So, for it to find tankprices.csv from this folder, it has to say, "Let's go up and let's find tank prices in this folder." Alright, so we've got our df is that. That is x, cool. Now, let's go ahead and stop this, just so I can mess around on the console. And what did I call this? This was... Oh, I just dumped it in there. Oh, I see, I see. So, really what I want is for this to be there. Alright, cool. Let's go ahead and run that. So, I got this thing called tanks. And tanks has all of this data and I want to figure out which data do I display. So, I do want to render a plot. I don't necessarily want to render a histogram. Got stuff about bins. Alright. So... What do we care about? I care about capacity and I care about floor space. So, let's try and make this GeomPlot GDplot on df with our x variable. Let's go ahead and make this... Let's make it capacity. And then our y, we'll make that price. Lowercase price, because that's the numeric version. And then, we can say alpha, this is how see-through it is. We can set this to be... We'll make it darker for more gallons per dollar. Remember, we've got this sort of in both directions, gallons per dollar and dollars per gallon. Try stuff and see what fits better. I'm gonna start here and maybe change it. And then I'll say size equals price. Let's make that log of price. Okay, we don't have natural log. We can change our base. Okay, so I think log is natural log. Whatever, alright. So, I'll just... Where'd I go? Let's change this to the log of price. Plus geompoint. Let's see what happens. See if we get an error. If not, then we've done something. Cool, we have done something. It's not what I want, but it's close. Alright, so we've got prices between zero and a thousand dollars. That feels about right from what I remember looking at this data over the weekend. Capacity from zero to 15,000, that doesn't seem right. Let's look. Can we view this without running this? I gotta stop the app. View tanks. And did I put capacity with a lowercase? There we go. Capacity with a lowercase, good. Make sure that that does something. So, what's our biggest capacity? 67... No, that's not right. Is this treating this as text? So, if I do, what is tanks dollar price? It's a numeric vector. Tanks dollar price summary. So, we have some NAS, that's fine. We have a max of 999.95, just about a thousand. Oh, sorry, that's price, I want capacity. Okay, so we do have a tank with a capacity of 15,500. So, let's maybe filter this. So, let's filter to capacity is less than 200. Cool. Run that again, see if it looks better. Alright, this looks better. We still have that expensive one. I would like to have some sort of a tooltip or maybe the ability to click a dot and have it take us to the URL. Number of bins, log of price, didn't give us a ton. Let's try getting rid of that log. Gallons per dollar, okay. 10 cents, 20 cents, 30 cents. Price 250 up to 750. Alright, what did I do here? Alpha gallons per dollar. Oops. Hang on. There we go. Gallons per dollar, okay. So, the darker it is, the more we get for our money. That's good. Size shouldn't be price, size should be floor area. That makes more sense. And we got an error, let's see. Draw reactive. Keep vec names true as a named vector, blah, 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 blah. Input to as JSON. Alright, so, quick digression. JSON is a data format. It's sort of one of the fundamentals. In the same way CSV is really fundamental for data in a table. JSON is a very common way to handle data in other programming languages, in web data. It's sort of a convenient text format for kind of less structured data than what we have in tables. There we go, yada. Warning and error geompoint. Problem, well, computing aesthetics, error occurred. Floor area not found, okay, that's... That's something I can deal with. Floor space, that's what I want. Okay. Not too bad. Again, warning, removed some NAS, that's fine. And what have we got? Gallons per dollar, floor space, good. So, the bigger ones are bigger and we should see more of them up here. Cool, we have some relatively small ones. Let's try this. Try reloading it, see if it gets a little bit more dramatic. Okay, so log of floor space, a little bit more dramatic. Let's try multiplying by 10, just didn't do much. Okay, that just added zeros. Alright, mind that, we'll leave it as it is, that's fine. Reload that, cool. Log of floor space. Okay, not as dramatic as I'd hoped, let's see. Let's try color. Refresh this. Okay, so darker is smaller. Not super dramatic. I kind of have a little bit... Oh, and you can't see this because I'm on the... Okay. So, we're getting something. It's a little hard to read all this. It's hard to distinguish the light blue from the light gray. So, let's just get rid of the alpha for now. I'm gonna keep the old version. Reload that. Cool, so now we just have bluer means bigger, takes up more space. Darker means lighter, takes up less space. And so, very predictably, we have darker dots down for the smaller capacity. But we can also kind of tell here, we've got darker dots than up here. Same capacity, but smaller floor space. So, these are probably weird rectangles, these are probably cylinders. Now, this number of bins, this is still not super helpful for us. So, that was what, taking the input? So, you have the slider input. And where did we use that? I've kind of deleted a bunch of stuff here. How far do I want to undo all this? Actually, you know what I can do? I can take... Look at what's on GitHub. Recwebber slash sample final project. And we've got under tanks, 15 minutes ago, we just added this into app.r, where we had our slider input, our main panel output with the dist plot. Output dist plot, we generate using data from x. These bins, which we figure out length input dollar bins plus one. So, here is where our input was coming into the default and modifying it. So, by changing this slider input, we're able to affect... Yeah, and we're calling it bins. Modifying this bit of code that I've deleted from the version I'm using here. So, let's go ahead and do a shiny app cheat sheet. Cool. So, yada, yada, yada. Inputs. Cool, we've got different options. We've got buttons, we've got links. Ooh, yeah, links might be good. That would involve going back to main.r, modifying to keep a URL in there. And that might be relatively easy. Oh yeah, we pull out the table. Let's take a quick look at that again. Tankmart, page two of the RV tanks. So, we do have URLs that we can pull out from the name. So, when we ingest a page, give it a URL, we download the page. We get the data from the page using HTML table. We convert that to a price. And that just stays as text. Now, I wonder if we could put URL equals... Can we do this in the table? Maybe. I'm solving too many things at once. What I have in mind here, I'm gonna leave myself a node, is extract href from price text. Uppercase price, name. Cool. Now, I might be able to get this as a set of links. So, if I do that... What are we gonna get? Now... Again, I'm solving the problem I don't need to solve right now. I've got the hint to future self to figure that out. I'm not gonna figure it out right now. I'm gonna focus on the shiny. Alright, so what does the shiny app need from me? It needs some sort of input. So, here I've got slider input named bins. Oops. Alright. Date range, file input, numeric input, min, max step width. Okay, so that'd be putting in a number, putting a password, radio buttons. That could be useful, for example, if I wanted to allow to filter to cylindrical versus rectangular tanks. Select input, this will be a dropdown menu. Slider input is like what we've got, but I think it's only gonna give us one value. I guess we could have a min size and a max size, let's start there. So, we'll have these inputs. Slider input. Min size. Slider input. Max size. And I believe these need commas. See if that gets rid of these little errors. Looks like, good. Alright, so... Minimum capacity. Maximum capacity. Min equals... Min equals... Alright, so our min should be... Giving us a name? I don't even know if we can... I'm gonna try. Worst case, it doesn't work. But if I do input min size here as the minimum and then max should be... Let's just say our max capacity is a... Let's make it 250. Min will be, let's say, 10. And our maximum minimum capacity will be, let's say, also 250. Well, it should be smaller than that. Let's say our maximum minimum capacity should be... Maximum minimum. Let's call it 100. And then a value, let's say we set our value to 20. Min of whatever this slider up here is, hopefully. Max of 250 and a value of, let's say, 100. Let's see if it works. Reload. Error has occurred, input not found. Okay. So... Let's try that. Min size not found, okay, that's fine. So, our minimum maximum, it's a weird phrase, let's make it 100. Okay, good, 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 good. Alright, so number bins, this does nothing at all. But if I want to say our maximum capacity is going to be something, and I could do the same with prices, but I'm not gonna do that just yet. So, where do I do this? I filter this so that capacity is greater or equal to input dollar... What did I call this? Min size. And capacity is less than or equal to input dollar max size. Reload. Alright, so if our minimum capacity is gonna be 100, then our capacity's between 100 and 100, between 100 and 250, we're changing this. Between 10 and 250, oops, or 13 and 250, we're changing this. Cool, so we have basically a simple way to affect what we're doing over here. Nice. Now, looking at this data, the economist in me says, "I see a couple regression lines that should be in here." Maybe I want to visualize that. And then maybe I want to be able to use that information. Alright, so maybe given this data, what do I expect the price to be for a given capacity? Alright, let's do a couple things. So, first off, I don't need this, let's get rid of it. So, let's do a numeric input. numeric input, and we'll call this... I'm gonna call it price hat. That, we give figures hats when we want them to be special. Price hat, as in some hypothetical price figure we're gonna put in there. The label we'll put in is, let's say, we'll call it hypothetical price. And our value will be, oh, not price. Let's call it capacity. We'll call it cap hat. Hypothetical capacity. Let's set that value to say 50. Cool. And I'm just gonna do some little tweaks here and make that... Whatever. Okay, I'm not gonna mess with it too much. Okay, so we've got some hypothetical thing, we've got a value of 50. Let's refresh this. So, now we've got this hypothetical capacity, we can plug that in there. And let's go ahead and plot that. So, we'll say plus, we want a vertical line. GeomV line. And I believe what we want is just input dollar cap hat. And that has to be in aesthetics. And I believe I set this to x equals unknown aesthetics, error object object. Reload, ignoring aesthetics, new problem there. GeomV line, let's see what I'm missing. Example, x intercept equals, cool. X intercept equals input cap hat. Refresh. Awesome, cool. Let's go ahead and throw a regression line up there. Geomsmooth method equals lm. Refresh. And so now we've got this prediction. It's not a great prediction, but we can kind of simply visualize what's going on. If we modify that, we can see what happens as we grow our capacity. You might expect this line to get a little bit flatter because we've got this data down here. Obviously, econometrically, this is not a great regression. We're gonna have some problems here, but our question here is not getting a good regression. It's just getting a useful visualization. And we can see, you know, we get some idea of sort of this correlation between capacity and price. So, we've got that. What's another thing we want? So, this is part of our distribution plot. I wanna put on a Geom EachLine as y intercept equals prediction. Alright, so what is that prediction? So inside the server function, but not inside output. Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start by taking this and put that out. And that doesn't need to be inside this render plot function. Cool, so I've got my data frame. I've got it filtered based on capacity. And then I can say our model, we'll take a linear model of... We want price as a function of capacity for data equals df. Alright, so we've got a model. And then... Color aesthetic factor, color. Sorry, I'm getting distracted by warning messages here. So I'm gonna stop the shiny app. And I think it's predict. Yeah, I think predict is what I want. So. I want to predict with our model. And let's see how I'm supposed to use predict. Try yada, yada, yada. Let's do predict.lm. We want an object, we want new data. Alright, so we want to predict with this model. And we wanna say new data equals data dot frame. And what do we have in here? We've got price equals input dollar cap hat. And I keep deselecting here. It's not price. It's capacity. And we are predicting the price. And we're throwing that all in there. Alright, let's see if I've got any errors and let's fix those. Okay, we've got a problem at line 38. Should be okay. Can't access reactive value min size outside consumer. Okay. So I take it back. I guess we do need to put this inside a render plot. Let's get rid of some of these comments that I don't actually need. Reindent. Let's check everything, run it, see if it works. Still no. Do we need to wrap inside reactive? Can't get min size. Input model, ggplot, that all seems fine. So we've got our df. Reactive value. Or observe. Let's try. What have I got off? Ow! Sorry, I got distracted again. Let's try reactive. And I believe I need to put this all into curly braces. Okay. We're closer. We're closer, but still not working. Let's see. Have I misspelled data in ggplot? It's possible. I have misspelled things before. This seems fine, but maybe I need to do something special to access this when it's in a reactive. Oh, wait. So it's been a while. You're watching me be rusty here. Let's try it like this. So df will be reactive. And model. Let's make that reactive as well. Finger crossed. Nope, still not working. Alright. Well, let's ask. Oh, here we go, reactivate. Perfect. So we got inputs. Those are going to have side effects. We're going to have reactive code. And then isolate. And then render. Okay. Input reactive val. Creates a single reactive val. Reactive values creates a list. Reactive expressions. So let's see, reactive, we've got some stuff. We'll paste them together, a and z. Render text. Where we call reactive as a function. Okay, so reactive outputs a function. So this. This, might be this. Let's see if it works. And if it does, I'll explain. And it didn't, so I don't have to. Tried to do something that can only be done from inside a reactive consumer? Okay, so maybe this needs to be observe. Okay. Misspelled data, specify columns, yada, 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 listening, 524 rows. Have we misspelled data? Is this line 41? That should be fine. df. Input. Oh, I know why. Okay. A little weird. Still not what I'm looking for, but again, this comes from df being treated as reactive. It becomes, instead of just a thing, it becomes a function. Which is a little weird. But it'll be fine. No applicable method for predict applied to... Okay, so we can't predict based on that. So let's try this. Let's make this reactive. And let's make this a function. And let's see if it works. Oh, this looks good. Let's make this maximum capacity 250. Hypothetical capacity of 150. And let's see if this horizontal line goes up. And it does, look at that! Alright. Now. So given this hypothetical capacity, I wanna get a predicted price. So let's go ahead and put that on our UI page, our user interface. So on the server, we predicted a price. Right here. So let's see, maybe what I want also is output dollar. Red price is... And I think that this one I want to be reactive. And the reaction I want here is that I want most of this. And then I want over here, besides the numeric output, I want a numeric output. Outputs. Have I got? Render table, render text, I think is what I want. Is that what I want? No, so this is gonna be on UI. Text input, names, yada, yada, layouts. Themes. Not gonna worry about themes. I just want this number to be displayed right under numeric input. So right now, we've got whatever this is, looks like $605. I wanna be able to plug in $605 down here. So. So, 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 so. I think what... Well, I think a lot of things. None of them are right until I've tested them. So let's say this is... Outputs render. Star output. Kind of like plot output. Render output. Data table output, image output, plot output, verbatim text output. I think I want text output. There we go. Text output. The output ID is red price. Ran into a problem there. Text output. Alright, text output, output ID, container equals blah, 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 verbatim text output, blah, 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 details, blah, blah, blah. UI text output, text. Verbatim text output, verb. Output text is gonna be based on render text. So this, I think, instead of reactive, is going to be render text. Unexpected close parentheses. Alright, look at that. Cool. So if we are looking within this range and we get a 50 gallon tank, we expect it to cost 389 bucks. If we double that to 100, we expect $651. If we change our maximum capacity, our prediction changes a little bit. Notice again, you know, our prediction fell. And that's probably driven by this extra bit of data pulling down the results of our regression. And so let's modify that just a touch. Start to lose some of these and our line fits our data a little bit better. I think when we were looking at the cylindrical tanks, it was basically starting at 100 gallons. So if we make this bigger, we're gonna catch more of these cylindrical tanks. And that's going to pull down our estimate of the relationship between capacity and price. Again, not great econometrics, but we have a tool that now takes some data and allows us to interact with it. So hypothetical capacity, let's just make that a little more useful. So we've got predict. We do some stuff. So let's go ahead and just plug that all into a paste. So we're going to take that prediction and we're going to say expected price. Let's see what happens. Reload. Expected price is something. Cool, and then let's go ahead and round this. Digits equals 2. See if that looks a little bit better. Awesome, let's go ahead and add a dollar sign. And let's make this a paste zero. I mean, not make it a paste zero, just so you can see why I'm about to make it a paste zero. So refresh. And look at these weird spaces here. When I make that paste zero, now I've got 389 mashed together with the rest. Without paste zero, I had a little space in between. Looked a little bit funny. But it was a minor change to make that look a little bit better. Can I make this bold as well? I wonder. Render text, blah, 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 output arguments. UI. Return stuff. BR. Bet I can do that. Let's see what happens. Not BR. Key strong. Okay. So let's call that strong. No. Alright, whatever. That would be nice if it did what I wanted. I'm gonna try just one more thing real quick. Strong. Strong. Bet it just quotes it verbatim, which is not what I want. Whatever. I don't need to solve this problem right now. Let's just make sure I've got something that works. And I do. Alright. So when you're doing this sort of stuff, it's not the worst idea to leave a little bit of work for yourself to do. Something to kind of pick things up, something easy to get started on. I didn't quite do that for myself today. I've kind of left myself with something that's kind of a project. Well, kind of, but it's a project. I've got sort of to a natural breaking point without really setting myself up for more work for what I'm gonna do next. I don't know what I'm gonna do next. But what I do have is some work that I'm gonna back up. So let's go ahead and set these. I'll put CSV for use in the shiny app. I'm just doing three separate commits just to clarify everything that's going on. Setup ideas for next work session. And actually, I take it back. I did leave myself some ideas for the next work session. And then let's call this get shiny app working with water tank dataset. Cool. Commit, close, push, that is all now on GitHub. And the ideas I have going forward. Let's go ahead and add this. So I've got some visualizations, I've got a shiny app. But what I can do is pull product URLs while ingesting data. And then add product URL links to shiny visualization. So what I would really like to be able to do is to look at this and say, oh, look at this. This one over here is really underpriced for the capacity. I wanna be able to click on that and have it open up a tab and show me that particular water tank. But I'm not gonna figure that out today. For now, I'm going to take a break, let my brain percolate on this. let my brain percolate on this, and hopefully get some new interesting ideas that I can build on in the future. Alright, as usual, if you have questions, let me know in the usual places, and I will talk to you in the future.